And good evening and welcome to the August 14th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you in our audience present with us tonight, and we're glad to have those that are at home or somewhere watching us on live TV. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as we have Natalie Murray, who is a sixth grade student at Northfield, and also Jasmine Stevens, a third grade student at Discovery School, to lead us in our pledge, followed then by our moment of silence. Ladies?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. Remember the board, you have seen a copy of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. King. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communications, Dr. Gilbert or Lisa?
Sorry, I don't want to get out of order, so I do want to go ahead and yield the podium to TOS.
Yes.
You want to?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Dale Lynch, Director of the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendent's, and tonight, I want to say a special greeting on behalf of our organization to this Board of Education and say thank you for your service. I come here and bring greetings, but I also come and bring great accolades to your superintendent or director of schools. But before I do that, I'm going to go off script for just a second because a little over 30 years ago, there's a gentleman in the back who began his teaching career with me at David Crockett High School, your principal, Mr. Gene Lloyd. Mr. Lloyd and I served in high school in East Tennessee, and I want you to know what a fine gentleman and a fine, fine man that you have here. So Gene, it's great to see you again. Appreciate you and all that you do. He has a love for kids, and I know that, so you have done a great job in hiring one of the best in Tennessee. But also, tonight, I want to recognize your director of schools, Dr. Linda Gilbert. And Dr. Gilbert, would you please join me at the podium? And as Dr. Gilbert is making her way down, I want to share with you, as a retired superintendent for almost two decades, I personally know how important it is to have a great relationship between the Board of Education and your director of schools. So on behalf of our organization and also on behalf of Tennessee School Boards Association, thank you for what you do, the great working relationship you have with your director, but also the great things you do for boys and girls here in this school system. But tonight, I'm here to honor and recognize Dr. Linda Gilbert. There is not a better accomplishment that one can receive than to receive a pat on the back, a congratulatory word of good job, well done, by your colleagues. And that is what has happened here with Dr. Gilbert. 2019 Mid Cumberland Tennessee Superintendent of the Year, Murfreesboro City Schools, Dr. Linda Gilbert, presented by the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendent's. Dr. Gilbert, we're proud of you. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate Dale being here very much. It means a lot to have him here, and it means a lot to have the colleagues that I work with, not only with TOS, but the colleagues I work with every day, because this is a large school district, and it's a very complex school district. And without the principals, without the staff, without the central office staff, without all the support personnel, the teachers, this work would not get done. But also, it would not get done without you. So I certainly appreciate the support you give to the school district, the support that you give to me, and we'll just keep moving forward. So thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, and we congratulate you. Wonderful honor. That's kind of like being the teacher of the year in your school building, right? That's determined by, I'm assuming Dale, by peers?
By peers, yes, sir.
It makes it even more special.
Yep.
All right, Ms. Trail?
Thank you. I would like to start out, and congratulations, Dr. Gilbert. Murfreesboro City Schools would like to thank Middle Tennessee Ripper Graphics and Advanced Financial Foundation for their financial support for the IFA Code Academy, which was held in June. If you'll remember, we had great success with that academy, and we appreciate those sponsorships. Mitchell Nielsen Schools would like to thank Jimmy John's and Memorial Boulevard for providing lunch for our teachers and staff on their end service day, the Noon Rotary Club for their generous donation of school supplies, and Third Baptist Church for donating money for the Mitchell Nielsen Uniform Fund, the truckload of school supplies they provided, and for hosting the 11th Annual Back to School Lunch for Mitchell Nielsen Teachers and Staff. Case and Lane Academy would also like to thank Holy Cross Church for their wonderful donation of school supplies and backpacks for their students. I want to say we've covering a few of these, but there are so many more organizations and churches that have provided backpacks, school supplies, just so many things for our teachers and our students. And I know for the next few weeks, we'll be thanking those, but I want to make sure that this is not a big list, but the list that we actually need to thank is huge. So again, I don't want to be amiss and not recognize all the churches and organizations that have helped us really start school off with a great start. Also want to go ahead and announce that two of our Bradley teachers have been selected to participate in the Tennessee STEM Innovation Network. Congratulations to Abby Sanders and Dana Stem, who were among only 40 teachers statewide who were chosen for this network. So we are once again proud to have Murfreesboro City School teachers on a state level representing us and getting their views out there and understanding what's going on. And that is your communications, sir.
Thank you, Mary, very much. And while we're doing communications, I'd like to recognize two visitors that we have with us tonight. Amy Martin, a board member from Bedford County in Shelbyville, Alicia Barker, a board member from Franklin Special School District, along with our own Mr. Gary Anderson, who is a member of the Williamson County School Board, in their presence tonight and in the evaluation process for our board. We welcome all of you, and thank you ladies particularly for being here. Consent items? Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. Any discussion, question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Action items?
First action item, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, good evening, board. The first item that we're asking you to look at is the audit services. As you know, we are required to have an audit done on our main general purpose account, our federal accounts in each one of our individual schools. And this letter is an offer by our current auditor to continue to provide the same level of services that they have for us for the past three years at the same rate for the school year ending 2019, 2020, and 2021. The state requires that we have this engaged by September, and we have to notify them of the auditor that is providing the audit services. So we're asking that you approve to continue with Matlock Clements to continue to do our audit services.
All right, Ms. Smith?
You said the same rate, so I know it's 45,000 each year. Is it the same rate as in the past?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ballard?
And is this on a bid, or is this just assumed?
We went and did a bid back when we originally got them. It's professional services, and we're not required to do a bid, but we did one back when the board asked us to do that and look at other auditors, and they did win the bid back then, and they're continuing, offering to continue it at the same rate.
Okay, so we're okay on the purchasing procedures for that?
Yes, sir.
And that was three years ago? They've had the account for three?
This is their, this is for their fourth year.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to approve the bid, the audit services for the next three years?
Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
Thank you, Ms. Settle. Do I have a second?
Second, that emotion.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your second action item is your workers' comp and liability insurance approval. There is no way I'm going to take this one, so this is Ms. Ringstaff and also Mr. Adam.
Good evening. For the past several years, our workers' comp costs have risen, and the city suggested that possibly we could get a better price through a trust company, and there is a trust company called Tennessee Risk Management Trust. They insure 101 school districts in the state of Tennessee. They quoted us, they gave us a quote. The quote was satisfactory. It was cheaper than what we've been paying on workers' comp. The city has given their blessing, and for the remainder, it's going to be 326,000 for a 12-month period. I don't know if you see that where it says categories, duties, classification, and for, if it was from 7-1 2018 to 7-1 2019, it was going to be 326,000. But when it's prorated, it's going to be effective tonight at midnight, 12:01 on August 15th. And it's going to be $285,902 for the remainder of this fiscal year. So we recommend approval. Adam, do you have anything to add to that?
Sure. I would again just second the recommendation. We've reviewed this policy. We've met with Tom Montgomery of the Tennessee Risk Management Trust. This provides coverage that's in almost all respects comparable to what the school system is getting through the self-insured risk fund right now. The only two caveats that I would add is that because this coverage is, well, first of all, that the payment of this premium would come out of the current budgeted line item for workers' compensation. There will have to be a budget amendment with respect to that line item. A couple of, because this is happening mid-fiscal year, one of the things that we'll need to determine is for workers' claims that were filed between July 1st of 2018 and 11:59 tonight, we'll have to figure out how much reserve we need to keep to make sure that there's enough, that there's sufficient reserves to pay out those or recover the expenses related to those. I don't know off the top of my head what that will be, but we will get that, and that will be worked into that budget amendment. The other thing that we will need to look into down the road is that currently the city carries, the self-insured risk fund carries excess insurance for workers' compensation claims in excess of $500,000. This policy covers workers' comp claims up to $1 million per claim, and so there, and in fact, the city schools is covered under that workers' comp excess insurance policy through June 30th of 2019. So something that we may need to revisit in the spring of next year or first quarter of next year is what, if any, excess insurance the city schools needs to continue to have for workers' comp claims, and if so, what would the premium be for that excess insurance coverage?
Ms. Settle?
I want to clarify, I want to make sure I'm understanding.
Sure.
We have this policy now that's going to take effect tonight midnight.
That's correct.
And we're still going to be covered under the, what I would say prior, under the city, the access?
You're going, you're not going to be covered under for...
Workers' comp.
You're not going to be covered for, workers' comp claims will not be covered below $1 million under the self-insured risk fund. However, the city, in addition to the self-insured risk fund, has a private excess liability policy in the event you get a workers' comp claim that goes, that exceeds the $1 million. So you're continuing going to be covered under that policy. The city schools will not be covered under the self-insured risk fund for the typical...
So we're looking at the $1 million mark as that, that kind of clarifies it for me?
Yes, yeah.
And this question would be to Ralph. Dun, dun, dun. He mentioned something about claims that may have come through. Do you know, do we have any, or do you know of any that possibly could come up? I'm hoping nothing tonight, like from 6:23 until 12:00 PM tonight. It could happen, but do we have anything in the pipes?
We do, we do, but they're minor.
Okay. And so that's going to be under the old policy up until...
Yes, and that's where he's talking about the reserve.
And then we're going to pay that?
Right.
From the reserves?
From the, from that same budgeted line item, there's going to be an amount that's going to be retained. So the budget amendment will be something that is, that line item in your budget is going to be $285,902 plus whatever that reserve requirement is for those claims that occurred between June 1st of 2019 and today, inclusive of today. I'm sorry, I said June 1st, 2019, June 1st, 2018, and today. Yes.
Mr. King? This is cheaper than us being self-insured, but what is, is it more expensive than what we've paid previously? And second, are we paying this in a lump sum or over payments, if you will?
This is cheaper than what we were getting previously, and we will be paying this in a lump sum by September 15th.
Have we always done a lump sum?
We're paying it on the front end now. Previously, we were paying it on the back end.
Okay, yeah.
And I can tell you that the, for the, those insurance products that the city gets in the private market, such as excess insurance, such as auto liability, we pay that lump sum at the beginning of the coverage period.
Okay. So this is standard?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
So I remember this being a big concern during budget time, and I'm so pleased that y'all took the initiative to go through the bidding process on this. Can you remind me how much that line item was?
It was over 500,000.
Okay. Thank you. I'd rather spend the money elsewhere. Thank you very much.
It was five, and that's 285. That's a pretty good saving.
That's good shopping. Good job.
Mr. Ballard?
To Ralph. Ralph, you mentioned that there's, this company now has 100-plus.
After tonight, it'd be 102.
Districts, yeah. So how to, as far as the cost, that's good. What about the quality of service as far as, do they have a measurement? Do you know that these guys, this company does have the...
We will meet with the workers' comp individual who will be our, I guess, service representative at our school system either Thursday or Friday if this is passed tonight, and we will learn about, and they've gone over already all their services. They will even certify forklift drivers. They will tour all of our schools. If there's an accident, they will do a case manager on each accident and have a representative and communicate with us through the whole process.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next item?
The other, well, the other piece to this is the liability insurance, and we just got the quote yesterday. Adam and I, we've got a few questions for the Tennessee Risk Management Trust, and we should get this back to you by the 28th and for a vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, board policies?
We have several board policies.
All right.
We're working through them. The first one is 4.404. This is use of copyrighted materials. It is very similar to the IS-21. Basically, the only difference is that it talks about, IS-21 talks about the director of school shall instruct the principals of the school to yearly remind the instructional staff. This one, and this is a TSBA recommended one, it has a section where it talks about the director of schools will establish regulations, and then the principal of each school will establish practices. So basically, you're looking at the same policy that we had before.
Line six, item number two, computer courses. What are the computer courses?
These would be, and Ralph, I may need your help or Gary's help with this, or Joe's helper. But basically, this is, this is talking about the problems that can be caused by software, the training that we would go through for principals and for teachers as far as how to protect the software, and also what we would do as far as the technology. So making sure that we are not, we're not using, well, one practice that comes to mind is when you have your college students that are taking copyrighted material off the website. So this would be talking about the idea of not having software piracy, just being careful, being aware that software and things that are on the internet are also copyright protected.
So then I'm assuming that these computer courses are courses that they are instructed on and reminded about?
These would be reminders. In fact, we have, I believe, and I'm looking for Ms. Trail, but I know that we have, I'm thinking, is there a way that we can actually pick up if there has been? I know in the past, we've had a company that contacted us and said, be aware.
Oh, yes, we did contact them.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions on policy 4.404? Do I have a motion to approve this policy?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. King. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
The next two, the next two policies I'm going to turn over to, again, to Mr. Ringstaff. The first one is 5.106, application and employment, and the second one is 5.118. You'll notice tonight that there are several policies that have to do with making sure that if there has been someone who has been convicted of any kind of child abuse or sexual abuse or neglect, that those now are reported. So you'll see several of your policies tonight that really the changes have to do with that.
Okay, 5.106, application and employment, lines 20 and to 24 are just new TSBA recommendation. These are things that we must go through to ensure that the employee is not flagged under DCS, Department of Children's Services, or the Department of Health, and we already do these things. So lines 20 through 24 and 38 through 42, one's for professional employees, certified employees, and one is for classified employees, supporting employees, and it's basically the same thing, but we're already doing it. So I recommend approval of this board policy.
And it's a result of state laws that were passed.
I have a question. Line 55, from the date of the written acceptance, such person is considered to be under employment with the system and is subject to all rights, privileges, and duties. So if we sign somebody in April to teach the following school year, and they agree, then they're under these same conditions. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any question, Ms. Smith?
I rarely do this. I am going to applaud whomever added this to the Tennessee code. So just know, I'm praising this.
Let the record show.
Let the record show, I am praising this.
She's softened up since she's leaving.
That's right.
Getting slowed down. All right, do I have a motion to approve policy 5.106?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
The next policy is 5.118, background investigations, lines seven through 12, basically say the same thing as the previous policy. Line 11 and 12, and we do this, the board shall pay any cost incurred to perform these background checks and fingerprinting. The two lines that really is a huge difference is lines 13 and 14, background checks shall be required of these employees at least once every five years after the date of hire. So what Murfreesboro City Schools is going to do, and work, I'm going to try to word this correctly, I don't want to say old employees, our most senior employees will be fingerprinted first, and then we're going to do about 300 a year, 300 additional background checks a year in addition to what we currently do. We have about 1,400, 1,500 full-time employees, our employees period, and so we're going to do 300 at $35 apiece. That's going to be about $10,000 extra each year. And within five years, we're going to get everybody background checked, and we're going to start that rotation over again.
Okay.
So that's, that's the big difference in this policy, that the state passed a law that everyone, because we have many employees who've never gotten a background check, and you don't know what they've done, what, so every five years, everyone will get a background check who's employed with Murfreesboro City Schools. Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Ms. Settle, if you're worried about your background check?
I am, no. I should be.
I was going to ask you if we were in that group.
I'm not worried. The question that I have is actually kind of a mechanics question. Do we, do we contract that out as far as, or do we just, is there a database that we...
Actually, company...
You mentioned the price, so now I'm thinking dollars.
It gets bid out every so often by the state, and whoever has the lowest bid, that company will do all the TBI, FBI background checks, and that's for anyone who wants to carry a gun and everything.
It's the same system then?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not like we have our own group then?
No. We share with Rutherford County all the other schools.
Do we pay for that?
Yes, sir.
For employee?
About $35 apiece.
Okay. You may have said that. Okay, all right. Mr. Ballard?
It just occurred to me though, that we're going to go back and do the five-year check on employees that may have not ever had a background check, as you said. So what if, let's say 10 years ago, we've got an employee that had a drug arrest, you know, or picked up for, you know, misdemeanor type thing? What are we going to do with that?
Mr. Ballard, I look at all those background checks that come back with what we call an indication, and if it's something like that, a DUI five years ago, I will sign approval and go ahead and allow them to be unemployed. There are certain crimes that they can, and by no means be employed in the school district, anything to do with children, all the felonies and things like that. But those type of deals, we can use some judgment.
Sure, good, okay.
Other questions? Do I have a motion to approve policy five point one one eight, background investigations?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your next policy is five point two oh three, and Ralph, I'm going to go over this, and if I'm messing up, then you can correct it. The only change on this policy is, is at the bottom, the lines nineteen through twenty-two. Again, if you look at this, it has to do with that series of laws that we were referencing once before. But neither did the district nor the board shall enter into or require a current or former employee to enter into a non-disclosure agreement during a settlement for any act of sexual misconduct. And then it talks about that I, I direct, that I develop administrative procedures. But that's your change in this policy and what the policy was before. So you can't hide it.
No question.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Regarding the, this line of change or comments in the policies that we're talking about now, I didn't, are we looking at anything to add for domestic abuse? That seems to be, you know, the new hot issue that is, and rightfully so. But do we have that addressed somewhat, like in the contractually with the employees?
And it doesn't, this doesn't include sexual harassment.
It says just misconduct.
It's just, it's all with children.
I guess I, maybe I'm, the point of my question is, in thinking, do we have something? We're talking about all of this, these type issues, but what about, I didn't see domestic in these, but do we have it anywhere?
Again, as I was referring earlier, that's a judge McCall. We recently wanted to hire a custodian who had been arrested on domestic assault. We talked, and she was able to get documentation from the court that all the charges had been dismissed, and she had told me what happened, and approved it.
But this policy basically just says that as an employee, you're not supposed to assist someone.
I can explain this policy to you.
What was the right place for the question?
I can explain this policy to you.
Okay.
Back in, back in the day, a director of schools may call a teacher or coach in, say, look, you've had accusations that something was going on between you and the cheerleader. I'm going to let you resign, and your personnel file is not going to reflect anything about this. And you can get a job anywhere in the state of Tennessee, and I'm not going to say anything negative about you. This prohibits that from happening now.
Yeah.
So, Ms. King?
That, the description or the, the situation he's describing is exactly what, when I went to the legal training, is, is now districts cannot cover up for an employee. And that's basically what lines nineteen and twenty are, is if we terminate someone's employment based on these sexual misconduct with a student, we cannot cover it up or issue a non-disclosure. That's what... We can't pass the problem along.
Correct.
I would concur with Mr. King's description.
All right, do I have a motion to approve policy five point two oh three?
Uh, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. King. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next policy.
Okay, the next policy is family medical leave, five point three oh five. The state representative, state government passed an amendment to this law. They changed this law a little bit, lines thirty-two through thirty-nine. Let me give you some history on this, and then we'll tell you how the law changed. Previously, an employee or the spouse could take sick days for the time that the doctor stated that they were medically unable to work for a normal pregnancy. And this is just for maternity. Normal pregnancy, six weeks, sometimes eight weeks. And that's it. That's the only time that they could take sick leave, paid sick leave. Now, the law allows, FMLA allows three months, twelve weeks. Tennessee maternity slash paternity law allows them four months. None of that has changed the, the length of time. What changed, the state government said, teachers can take up to twelve weeks paid leave if they have the sick days, twelve weeks. So it's sixty paid sick days. So if somebody has sixty paid sick days, and this is the mother or the father, they can take up to twelve weeks of paid leave. Now, this board in the past, because this is limited to teachers. This board in the past has said, not just teachers, but all full-time employees. So what we've done, lines thirty-two to thirty-nine, instead of teachers, wherever teacher was in the law, we put employee. So we've had, we've given the opportunity for all full-time employees to take up to twelve weeks if they have those sixty days. If they have forty-five, they can take up to forty-five, which is nine weeks. But they can take up to twelve weeks of paid leave if they have the sick days. And that's father or mother. And that same holds true with adoption. So we, and it's up to you. If you just want to do teachers, that's up to you. That's the law. We have to do that.
Where does it say, Ralph, and I'm sure it does, where did it say full-time employees?
The full-time employees are the only ones who accrue sick leave.
By full-time, you mean so many hours a week? An, an MDA, that's a midday MDA, do they not accrue sick leave?
No, sir.
They don't?
No, sir. Full-time employees, thirty hours or more.
A week. Okay.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Suddles?
Thank you. I want to appreciate the fact that it does say employees. I like that because teachers are not the only people that have to take leave or have babies. The question I have is, you mentioned twelve weeks of paid leave if they've accumulated such time. I, my understanding of FMLA is that they can then go on unpaid leave after that.
In Tennessee, they can go up to four months.
Up to four months?
Yes, sir.
So the twelve, twelve weeks can be paid if they've accumulated up to twelve weeks?
Yes.
If they've accumulated more than twelve weeks?
No, it's limited to twelve weeks.
Limited to twelve weeks of paid. After that, they would go on an unpaid status. And during the time that they're on unpaid status, they would not accrue leave. Is that correct?
Correct.
I want to make a clarification here. The, the FMLA and the Tennessee Parental Leave Act, what those do is establish what the amount of leave, paid or unpaid, that a person can take due to the birth or adoption of a child. What, what this is doing is saying, within that twelve or sixteen-week period, how much of that is, can be, can, can be, you can use sick leave to have that leave paid. So it's not, the, this is not an extension of the twelve or sixteen-week period for paternity or, paternity or maternity leave. It's, it's, it's just whether that leave is paid or not paid, and it's dependent on how many benefit hours an employee has accrued.
I understood most, most of that. The part, I'm not just looking, I guess we're, we're focusing on the maternity, paternity leave, but I'm looking at the overall FMLA. Because if it is a sickness that is not, well, because having a baby is not a sickness, that's a joy. But if I had an illness, and it took me out of my work for the school system, that's, that's kind of where I was going, not just with this. So if, if it were, if it were, I had to be out for treatment for so long. That, that was kind of where I was going, not just with the, the, the paternity and maternity. So with the FMLA, if I had another illness, do, does it still have to go within that twelve-week as far as sick leave, or does it?
We try to work with employees. If, we have AD who, which allows us to extend the family medical leave at thirty additional days, even if they don't have any other sick time. If I do have sick days, it will extend it to the duration of your sick days.
Okay. And we don't have a sick leave bank, do we?
Yes, sir.
We do?
Uh-huh. Yes.
I thought so, but I wasn't.
I'm on it. You might be able to lobby for a spot.
So we, that's the only change in this law, this board policy right here, just that section dealing with the sick leave for maternity and paternity. We recommend approval of this policy.
I know there is somewhere, I don't know exactly where, but I know that, I think that there is. Husband and wife?
Yeah, it was in there. Under the maternity part?
All right, well.
Line?
Yeah, maternity or otherwise, but the husband could take twelve weeks.
Under line forty-one.
If he had it, and then the wife could do the same, correct?
Line forty-one, I think.
Right.
Correct. It, it, yeah. They, we can limit to them to a combined total of twelve weeks. That's the law.
Oh, a combined total?
Yes, sir.
So daddy couldn't take twelve, and mama couldn't take twelve?
Not according to.
Twelve altogether?
Correct.
I got you. What I, what I was thinking. Okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve policy five point three oh five, family and medical leave?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Suddles. No more discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your next policy is the new attendance policy, and I think I expressed that that particular law is one of the law, longest laws I've ever seen. But I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Marlin.
This new attendance policy is an adaptation of the previous one that was passed by the board back in October, October the twenty-fourth. The, the substantial changes take place on the second page, starting at line thirty-four, where the, what the, what the state law that Dr. Gilbert referred to, it changed now as a multi-step process to make sure that we work with families regarding truancy, and that we proceed through a set of steps prior to submitting them or turning their case over to the juvenile court for truancy. So there, it's a three-tiered model. I'll, I'll be glad to go through this in whatever detail you would like. But there is, the, the process is written there, started at line thirty-four. Line thirty-nine talks about after a student is absent for five days, unexcused absences for five days, the parents are notified, and, and the director of schools or designee will then start the process toward tier one. During that time period, parents have an opportunity to turn in their excuses so that it's possible that the absences could be excused. They also have the, the right to ask for a hearing, and the hearing is documented further in the document. So I won't go into that now, but when we get down to line seventy-eight, we'll talk about that some. During that, during that time period, then, if the parents take no action or if the absences aren't excused, that starts the process where tier one, then the parents are involved in a, in a meeting with this, with the school, and they are asked to sign a contract, which talks about the details of what the expectations are for student attendance, expecting the, the students to be there every day, that if they are absent, to submit an excuse, if it is a medical, if they've gone to the doctor, or it falls into one of the other excused absences. If the parents don't comply with that, then as we go to the tier two, if you look on, starting at line sixty-one, tier two, if the student continues to have unexcused absences, or if the parents do not, and, and we'll have to add this, I think Mr. Tucker had the suggestion. So we'll add a phrase there, correct me, Mr. Tucker, if I'm incorrect. At the end of line sixty-one, if a student accumulates additional unexcused absences in violation of the attendance contract in tier one, or if the parents fail to execute the contract.
That's correct. Something of that nature.
We'll add that, that section, so that if, if the student continues to have absences or the parents don't follow the contract, then the student will be subject to tier two. Under tier two, the law suggests or tells, recommends that we, that the school district begin some individualized assessments. And as we look at that, there's not a lot of guidance in the law. We'll have to look at opportunities to, to find doc, find documents and assessments that will help us determine why the student continues to miss. So we'll look at things like mental health issues, transportation issues. We'll look at anxiety and other types of issues. And so the, as a result of this ongoing attendance problem, we'll begin a process where we'll do some assessments to see where's the problem coming from, and why does the student continue to be absent? Beyond that, then you'll see in tier three, it starts at line sixty-seven. If tier two is unsuccessful, interventions will be put into place, and that's where we'll call in, like our social workers and other counselors and other folks to, to put some interventions in place, either working with the parents or working with the students. I would imagine that a home visit would be something that we would look at, would, would be an intervention to where the social worker might go and actually spend more time talking with the parents to determine the reasons for the continued, continued absences. But beyond that point, then, after those interventions are exhausted, then the case would go to the juvenile court for, under, under truancy. So we would look at, at that aspect, and that's, that's part of what this law is looking at, is helping us make sure that we've taken additional steps to work with families to overcome the barriers for students attending school. And from that point on, then the, this part of the policy remains the same.
These days of absence, these are cumulative or in succession, the five days?
The five days would be in any order.
In your.
Of unexcused absences. So they might be, you know, two the first week and, and three the next week. But, so they don't have to be five days in succession.
Mr. Ballard?
I was trying to find it again, but I think I saw a couple of times we talk about attendance supervisor. It speaks to that. Who, who is our attendance supervisor?
I'm, I'm assuming, I'm looking at Dr. Gilbert. She's telling me that it's somebody else, but I'm assuming that's me.
But each school has someone that works with attendance. So.
Who is that?
I'm sorry?
There's a technical secretary at each school that takes care of attendance. So they would be.
At each school. Okay.
Each school does. Right. But when it gets past the school, it falls in your lap, correct?
I would be that person, I'm assuming.
Okay. Mr. King?
Really, just, it's not a question, it's an observation. It seems that this policy we're talking about now, the major difference between this and the old one, is we give the student five days, whereas the old one is ten. So we've lowered that from five, from ten days to five. That actions start at that point. We've always had that, that at five days, the parents would be notified. But at this point, then, this calls on us to do some other activities, which would be the, the conference and the, and the contract. I was, yeah, I understand, looking at the old one. We, we seem to be kicking this into gear a lot sooner. Right, right. One more, one more question, if I don't mind. Am I correct that if truancy is about enough problem, the parents are held accountable by the law some, some way?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
Can be a criminal, a criminal charge.
It can be, they can get in trouble.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They, they, they're the ones that can end up in court.
Correct. That's what I thought.
And they don't want to go before Donna Davenport.
That's my understanding, no.
Ms. Smith?
I just appreciate the flexibility that they're allowing some of our kids that do have some issues like anxiety, that seems to be accounted for very nicely in the new policy. I appreciate that.
And the idea is to give the parent some time, because sometimes in, in an emergency, dealing with some of those issues, parents may forget to go get those excuses from the doctor, and it allows that opportunity to do that. And it, and it gives us some flexibility as well. Doesn't say that all these conferences have to be face-to-face, although that's the best way to meet. But if a parent works and cannot come to the school, that gives us the opportunity by leaving it open like that, that we could do telephone conferences as well.
If my child is sick, and I write you a note the next day saying that my child was sick the previous day, that's good enough in the beginning, maybe not long-term, but?
After a point, and Dr. Lloyd, can you help me with that? Is that? And after a point, then we look for doctors to, to make those, to write those excuses?
Right, okay. So it's, it's not real difficult for a parent to get? So it's, it's not real difficult for a parent to get an excuse?
You know, there are, there are, there are times that I'm sure that would be a problem, and that's why it, it takes the discretion of, of the principal and, and other people to make sure that, that, uh, uh, when people suffer hardships, that we're, we look at those.
Okay. I do have a motion to approve the policy on attendance, six point two hundred.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. King, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you.
Your last policy is six point three oh nine, and this is a revision, and the revision comes because of state law, so if you'll look down in line thirty-one, after aggravated assault, it adds or commits assault that results in bodily injury. That's your difference.
Line four, are in school vehicles? And that should be and/or buses? That's my English for the day.
Well, yeah, you caught the typo too. I thought about this, in, in, in line twenty-two, and this may be spelled out in a different policy, I'm sorry if I forget, um, do we need to add the word student? Commits assault that results in bodily injury upon any teacher, principal, administrator, or any other employee of the school, or school resource officer? Didn't know if we needed to add the word student.
I think you should.
I'd say yes.
I think so.
I'm going to defer to you, because I know this is.
What do you think, Mr. Tucker?
Or, or is that covered under another policy, perhaps?
You're going to have it in, it, it will be in the discipline policy that has the levels of, that has the levels of infractions.
Yeah.
I know, and I'll, I'll check on that.
So we wouldn't be part of a zero tolerance?
I think, I think this zero, this zero tolerance here, this, the assault provision is dealing specifically with an assault against a school employee, and that, that, that disciplinary issues regarding to a, a scuffle, or where a student is injured is, in, in that, um, physical altercation may be handled differently. It's something that I'd be more than happy to look into, to see how that, um, to see why it's worded this way. I do know that the statutory reference, that, that if you, those fit, those footnotes where it says footnote five, commits aggravated assault, or, um, or assault that results in bodily injury, those are footnotes to criminal statutes, um, and so it's, the, uh, you're not dealing, when it's, it, when it's a physical altercation between two children, it's not necessarily, um, a crime, it's, it's an act of delinquency, it's not a crime, and so that you may be treating it differently, but it's, it's an issue that I'd be more than happy to look into and get back, um, at the next meeting on.
And I think with this, you're looking at zero tolerance, so you're looking at a year's exp, a year's expulsion, and the only person that can really change that is the director of schools. I think when you're having the, the altercations between students, then you can certainly have it gradated, and you could go up to a year, but with this, it's mandatory a year.
Mr. Settles?
Thank you. I'm in line three, and this is probably, I'm almost sure, this is probably just me. However, I keep stumbling over the word dangerous when it is right in front of weapon, as though there's a weapon that maybe won't be dangerous. Is that to distinguish it from a deadly weapon? And I do see in line six, where it says dangerous weapon, for the purpose of this policy shall include but are not limited to, et cetera, um, the heading says weapons and dangerous instruments. But in line three, we refer to dangerous weapon. I don't know what a non-dangerous weapon looks like, other than.
Like a textbook.
But a textbook isn't by virtue of design a weapon. It can be used as a weapon, but it's not designed for the purpose of being a weapon, so I guess that's, and I may just be hanging up on that, and if I am, I'm willing to say that it's just me.
And if I'm not mistaken, and I'll, I'll defer to you on this, but it is spelled, I believe it is spelled out in law, specifically, specific examples of those dangerous weapons, I believe that, when it comes to that particular policy, and that particular law.
Yeah, I can, I can pull that up right now.
I see, I see line six saying dangerous weapons for the purpose of this policy shall include but are not limited to a firearm, anything manifestly designed, made, or adapted for the purpose of inflicting death or serious bodily injury, or anything that is in the manner of its use or intended use is capable of causing death or serious bodily injury. That wouldn't be a textbook, because it wasn't.
No.
You know, so I, I guess I'm just hung up on the word dangerous, as though to say there are some non-dangerous weapons.
And, and we, we can get you the law, and I, and I did not look that up this time, but I know when this law was first passed, way back when, um, for example, a knife was considered to be, it was zero tolerance, and they changed it the next year, because what was happening is people were getting, um, they were being zero tolerant, students were, for bringing, uh, a butter knife, for bringing, bringing some other knife. So I think that this, this particular law is pretty specific, if, when you look at it, on what is defined as a dangerous weapon, and it does have to do with the ability, um, to have a projectile, but I, I'll find that for you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm looking at the statute right now, and actually, the footnote, um, at the end of paragraph, excuse me here, um, the para, at, at the end of line nine, there's a footnote two, that refers to a statute, it's a, it's a definitional statute, it's a criminal code, and it actually defines, and this goes to your point, it defines deadly weapons, not dangerous weapons. So the definition that is, that where it says, um, dangerous weapons for the purposes of this policy shall include but are not limited to a firearm or anything, you know, continuing, here in the criminal statute, it says deadly weapon, not dangerous weapon, means a fire, firearm, or anything manifestly designed, made, or adapted for the purpose of inflicting death or serious bodily injury, or anything that in the manner of its use or intended use is capable of causing death or serious bodily injury. So if thi- this language was, is what was proposed by, um, T S B A, but if you were to accurately track the statute, literally, you know, word for word, I think the precise word there would be deadly weapon and not dangerous.
And that's more to my point, it looks like we're, we're taking a firearm from being a deadly weapon, and we're downgrading it to a dangerous weapon, because if, there is a distinction in the law.
Yes.
Between the dangerous weapon and the deadly weapon. So our policy here, line six, says that a firearm for the purpose of this policy is only a dangerous weapon and not a deadly weapon, which is, I, I guess to me is a little interesting.
I would like to suggest if, if, if board agrees, that we postpone passage on first reading on this policy until we come back with more information and questions answered that have been raised. I think we've got some very good questions that, that have been raised, and before we get, give you time to research and look into it, and come back maybe at our next meeting.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Is that a?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll point out, when I look at the, uh, the sister policy that Dr. Gilbert mentioned, it's, uh, under the current policies, give me just a moment, uh, six point three one six, and you go down, and to answer Mr. Settles' point, it does mention or reference Tennessee, well, heck, I had it right in front of me, thirty-nine dash seventeen dash thirteen oh one. The one mentioned in our policy we're currently discussing is thirteen oh nine, so those are, I would assume, very closely aligned, however, in the policy that I'm talking about, it does mention, um, assaulting principal, teacher, et cetera, but then it goes down, one more students initiating a physical ta- attack on an individual school on property, school activity, et cetera. So it is spelled out in other policy, where students attacking students, so that's, but it also addresses, uh, different things that Mr. Settles is talking about, about the definition of weapons, but I like your idea of postponing this.
Okay. All right. Reports and information?
Okay, uh, Mr. Rynstaff?
This is the personnel report, this is the big report. This lists all certified personnel hired for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. We've hired fifty-nine certified personnel. Uh, the next page will be the interim, uh, certified personnel hired, and then we've got the certified resignations, retirement terminations, got a list of sixty-two individuals there. Then we have the classified personnel hired, classified resignations, retirements, terminations, and then we have, I think we have the transfer list, and then the assignment list of every school, of those personnel who will be with the, in that school for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Yes?
I, I would like to see a report, um, you don't have it tonight probably, but I would like to see a breakdown, uh, the list that you have given us, uh, between resignations, retirements, and terminations.
I'll be happy to give that to you.
Mr. Settles?
This will just be from my information, the designation of legacy, what is that?
Yeah, that, that, this is, this, these reports are run through Skyward. T C R S, Tennessee Consolidated Retirement Center, uh, system, before two thousand fourteen, everybody was on the legacy retirement plan. Uh, all of those old folks were on the legacy retirement plan. The new folks who ha, were hired after two thousand fourteen, they're on what you call a hybrid plan.
Okay.
Half 401K, half defined contribution.
Okay. So that, that's more for your informa, I got it.
Yes, sir.
I understand that, thank you.
Mr. King?
Mr. Rynstaff, you're talking about hiring the new teachers, I want to congratulate you all on signing day. That was a ton of fun. Excuse me, and I hope y'all keep that up, I loved it, I thought it was a great event.
It was.
Thank you, thank you, it was. So today, we hired our last teacher, we hoped, for the school year. Yeah, the, at the end, it was pretty tough finding good teachers. We, we were lucky.
Mr. Settles?
Thank you. Maybe just a blurb, because I, I, I don't want to belabor the time, but, on a program, because I've gotten calls on this, embedded program, could you just give us a blurb on that, so that if someone else, other than myself, gets a call about this, and you know what I'm speaking of, um, as far as the embedded program, could you just?
Yes, and the job embedded program is, if someone has already completed their bachelor's degree, and it could be, uh, science or something like that, and they said, whoa, I, I really would like to be a classroom teacher, they go back, start getting their master's degree, and instead of student teaching, they can, if they find a school system that will hire them, they could be in what they call job embedded, in lieu of student teaching, they, that school system can hire them for, let's say, a fourth grade teaching position, and they can get paid, and it would count towards their student teaching. So we would hire them, and then they would, uh, they'd count that as student teaching, plus they'd get paid.
Typically, you're going to have that if you cannot find a qualified person to, to serve in that role.
Thank you. Other reports, Mr. Anderson?
Uh, yes, you have in your information, the end of the year report for the whole, whole, whole fiscal year, it's a hundred percent, it is unaudited, the auditors will, are now going through all the books and everything. Uh, the good news is the net income was a little over a million dollars, and the reason for that was our growth money exceeded the amount that we had put in the budget. Uh, if you go to the revenue page, just to show you the current property tax, line one on revenue, uh, we were a hundred point eight percent, sales tax, we were ninety-nine point eight percent, and then everything else is over a hundred percent, except for, federal funds, there's always a variance on that, we never know, but the, basically what happened was we had our extra growth this year, that really covered our budget to make sure we were in good shape, so we had a hundred and two point six percent of revenue, so we were two point six percent above what we had budgeted to receive. Last year, we were at a hundred point two percent, so we were ag- again above it. On the expenditure side, we were at ninety-six point three percent of budget on expenditures, and that's exactly the same percentage as we was last year. Uh, so we ended the year in pretty good shape, the numbers will change slightly as they go, go through the audit, but, uh, overall, it was good news that we ended up with, uh, some fund balance dollars.
Any questions? Enrollment figures?
Uh, enrollment, I passed out the enrollment numbers there for you, as of today, we are at eight thousand nine hundred and eighteen students, we are sixty-three above where we finished last year at. Pupil teacher ratio for K through three is nineteen point four four to one, and four through six is twenty-one point one two, for a district-wide average of twenty point zero seven. So overall, we're in, um, you know, our pupil teacher ratio is really, really strong. Our special ed numbers are picking up, uh, we have two hundred and nine that are comprehensive development students, and a hundred and twenty-four that are pre-K, and that, uh, we usually start fifty to seventy, we're starting very high, we're getting more and more students moving in through our child fine, that come to us with some, with some needs.
Any question or comment, Ms. Smith?
So, Mr. Marlin, are we having a hard time staffing, providing services, or of the special ed children?
Not this time, um, it is something that applies more as those numbers can rise as we get closer, it will happen, but it's place on children, um, in, in schools where there are vacancies, and that's always difficult, and it's in order to make sure that our classrooms are at maximum capacity.
Any other questions? All right, any other business to come before this board tonight? Mr. Ballard?
I just, I just have a, a request regarding this, uh, you know, we've kicked off successfully the new building, uh, for the new school, so, uh, Dr. Gilbert, I want to make sure that we've got visibility about how we're progressing on that, so I would like in some kind of a, like Mr. Anderson, to provide at the board meeting, a, not just a, we're doing okay, or, or, you know, something verbal, give us a chart of where we're supposed to be, and whether we've achieved that point yet, a critical path chart, so we can see how we're doing.
I'll be glad to, I meet weekly with the construction team, we are one week ahead of schedule right now, which is really, really good news. Uh, we're out there, started this week on doing the geothermal well drilling, uh, they're really progressing very well, the city has been extremely helpful in getting us to the point of where we are, and working with us. Uh, so right now, uh, we have excellent contractors hired, uh, the city council approved the contract this week, I'm, I'm sorry, last week, and so we're, we're in good shape. I'll be glad to do that, we're also going to be taking some pictures with our drone of it, and provide those to you as well, and I'll be more than happy to give you a, a report at your board meeting on where we are. I do meet with them regularly, and I do have a schedule of where we should be, and we're ahead of schedule right now.
Maybe if we could get that once a month?
Yeah, no, yeah, we meet twice a month, once a month is fine, yeah. Yes, okay, be glad to.
Ms. Smith?
So my best resources, of course, are the children, so a fifth grader told me that she was disappointed that there had been a change in the social studies curriculum, and so I sent an inquiry to Dr. Gilbert, who seemed to be interested in that change as well, so she told me that she would give a report on that change.
So basically, I'm going to read the email that I sent you.
It was fascinating.
I couldn't, I couldn't spill it off, I had to look, we have, fortunately, we have on our website, under teachers, we have a scope and sequence, and so if you look at it, you'll see that there is a change, and, and you'll see the regular scope and sequence, but you'll also see something that talks about the difference in the old social studies standards and the new social. studies standards, and the new social studies standards, particularly at fourth and fifth grade. So what, what has happened is, the old standards go through, they go all the way from the explorers, all the way up to the Civil War, but they don't do the Civil War. The old fifth grade standards then continue on with history to the present day, but the new standards, they will, for fifth grade, they start at Reconstruction, so basically, if you don't do something this year to prepare those children, they'll miss the entire Civil War, and that sounds really strange to say, but, but that's the case. So, so what our teachers have done is, we're looking at that scope and sequence, and making sure that there are no gaps, but if you were to take the old scope, the old standards, and just teach to them this year, and then start the new standards, then you would wind up having that gap in there. So, I'm grateful that staff always looks at that, teachers always look at that, they figure out what they need to do, and then we can put it out there in the resources, so that's, that's what she's referencing.
So, the possibility is that we're going to forget the Civil War?
Well, if, if you don't, if schools do not take a look at the standards, that's exactly what would happen.
I appreciate schools looking at the standards, because that would be a major gap in our children's education.
That would be right.
Sure.
Okay, anything else coming for our board tonight?
Just an announcement?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to announce that the city legal department has hired a, a new assistant city attorney to provide ongoing and day-to-day legal representation for the Murfreesboro City Schools. On September fourth, Elizabeth Taylor will be joining the department as an assistant city attorney. She's currently the general counsel to the State Board of Education, and prior to that, she worked for the Tennessee Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights, and she currently lives in Smyrna, she graduated from Fisk University for undergrad, and went to University of Memphis for law school. So we're excited to have her coming and joining the team, she'll, she wasn't able to come to tonight's meeting, but she will come to the August twenty-eighth meeting, and again, her, her first day officially will be September fourth.
And I appreciate Mr. Tucker's help with this, and also the city's support of our doing this, I think it's going to be unbelievably helpful.
And you've already got space for it, central office?
Working on it right now.
All right, good deal, well, thank you very much, Adam, for that, that bit of information, I think we're, we're all, as the old saying goes, we're tickle pink to have our board. Anything else coming for our board tonight?
Kitchen area, it's gone.
Good night, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, good night?
Aye.